Is your learning process when encountering a new computer program?
I do have experience with the BSA, the tax part of it. As far as the accounting part of it, I do not have that experience, but I know that they have a lot of good seminars and classes that you can take. And I know that people are willing to come in to teach you the process. And it's all about, you know, just seeing it done with me, seeing it done and then, you know, just note taking and, you know, refer to your notes when it's time to fly alone.
Okay, Mr. Ruth, you want to take another swing?
Sure. Please describe your experience working with the local government. If you have not worked with the local government before, explain how your other job experiences would be applicable to this position.
Currently, I work for a Brandon Township. I am the treasurer's assistant and one step below the deputy treasurer and part-time there. So, and I've been there for two years.
Okay. Okay, and the last question, what's your experience and involvement in Holly Township?
I just moved here three years ago.
From?
From, I grew up in Kegel Harbor, but I moved from Warren. I lived in Warren and we moved out here and I absolutely love it. My family, my mom graduated from Holly High. I have family here. My cousins, they own a small little gardening company. So I have a lot of ties to Holly and I just, I absolutely love it. And I, my son goes to school here, so I do a lot of, he's chaperoning for fifth grade camp Monday. Wish me luck. So.
I grew up in West Bloomfield and I'm very familiar with Kegel Harbor. In fact, I lived across the street from the West Bloomfield School District, so I went to Waterford. But the kids across the street went to West Bloomfield. So, all right, does anybody else have any other questions? Any follow-up? All right, Ms. Dotson, we appreciate your time.
All right.
And we will, you will receive an acknowledgement.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know where Josh is, but he could, he could stop the meeting.
Yeah, do we have to go into recess or anything?
Yeah.
But they need us to restart it, so everything will be separated.
Oh, well then, I guess we can let it run.
Or we can shut off the mics.
I have a question. I know our next-
He's coming.
Our next candidate.
And, Nene, my name's George Collis. I'm the township supervisor. We have the township clerk, Karen Winchester. The treasurer is Jen Ryan. And our trustees, Mr. Ruth and Mr. Burton.
Hello.
So, we have 10 questions for you. We're going to take turns asking the questions. I will tell you this, if you looked at the agenda when you came in the door, it shows that we're going to make that appointment today.
Okay.
We put that on the agenda because without it, we couldn't do it. However, at the end of these four interviews, if this board is not ready to make a decision, we will simply table that. And if we need a second interview or something, then we'll follow that process. But that's why you see it on there.
If you may, if I grab one.
I'm sorry. Sure, go ahead. So, we will begin the interviews. I will start with Jen, the treasurer, number one.
All right, can you please describe your experience with accounts receivable and cash handling?
Sure, I have multiple years of cash handling experience. All of my working career has been in customer service and cashiering capacities. I was previously in a position where I was the bookkeeping vault associate. So I always handled thousands of dollars daily, creating bank deposits with that. Current, oh, I'm sorry. In my current position, I do all of the cash receipt, cash receiving for the city with tax and utility bill payments. I also do cemetery payments and any of the department, fire, police and department, their cash receivings.
What is your process if the recorded transactions don't match the cash received?
So, obviously in that event, it would be a trial and error. You see where your error is at, look for it, narrow it down to what, where specifically it may be off or such, and investigate at that point. And then obviously at that, once you figure out what the error is, you would then correct that error.
Okay, Karen, you want to take number two?
Yes, please describe your experience with accounts payable and payroll.
In my previous position, I did payroll, but I did it on the aspect of using, they used Kronos time system. And I verified that that time system that was people's time and hours were input correctly. And then submitted that data onto corporate, which they then produced the payroll. And accounts payable, I currently assist the treasurer with accounts payable for all of the city departments. And I previously did work by created invoices and maintained ledgers for the, for a building company as well. So, I really enjoy doing accounts payable, actually. I do. It's one of my favorite things.
So what is your process for verifying the accuracy of an invoice?
For, in my current position, I would verify obviously that it had an invoice number, a date, a department that it was set to. And then verifying that the services were completed and that it was an approved invoice. And once that invoice is signed off by the department head and issued to GL, I would then process that invoice.
Mr. Burton, number three.
Yep. Please describe your experience with accounting and reconciliations.
So I have lots of experience doing that. I previously, when I did bookkeeping, that was daily as far as receiving all of the cash bills and all of the credit card transactions and reconciling it with the reports that I created through the system to verify that those were correct. Currently, when I do bank deposits and I use BSNA for bank deposits, obviously I collect my data, which would be checks and cash and such, and verify with my reports that I have the correct amounts.
Okay, very good. And what is your process when you have unreconciled differences?
Obviously, the goal is to find out where the difference is. And so again, I would research and investigate possibly where there is a difference at. Find that, find out where that difference is and then correct that.
All right, Mr. Ruth's back in cleanup over here with number four again.
What is your priority when dealing with a dissatisfied resident or customer?
Oh, I got lots of experience with that. Like I said, all of my working career has been in customer service. So my goal is to make them happy, you know, always say yes if you can, sometimes you can't. But within my ability to make them say yes. So, I always, I always try to listen to them, understand where they're coming from, understand their problem, their question. And my goal is to get them resolution. Whether it's something that I know off the top of my head that I can do, or it may, you know, just give me a second, I can do that right now. If it's something that I don't know the answer to or need to, need further assistance with another department or associate, I would then take their information and let them know that I would get back, reach back out to them when I have the information. And then I would follow up with them.
Okay, I think I'm set.
All right. I will take number five. How do you organize and prioritize your tasks?
So for myself, I am a big list writer. I seem to do best with that. And what I like to do is each morning, before I start my day, I organize my tasks by, prioritize them by importance and kind of get my flow for the day. Obviously, things come up that maybe, may be a better, a more need, and I may need to adjust my priorities for the day. But essentially, I like to check off my list for the day that I've completed my tasks that needed to be done.
Okay, Ms. Ryan, number six.
How do you ensure good communication with coworkers?
That is, I like to make sure that there's, there's good communication within, obviously, the work setting. Obviously, in a treasurer position and a deputy treasurer, it's a very close working relationship. So obviously, you have to have that communication. And it's important to communicate well via conversations or email or phone calls. So I do find that, I do find that that is very important and I try to make that a main priority of mine.
Karen, number seven.
How do you determine what documentation to file?
I, so obviously, there's processes and procedures in place for any company or organization. So obviously, I would follow whatever processes and procedures are currently in place. I know in my current position, I do a lot with the cemetery. And the cemetery is something that, like, you don't destroy anything. So, you, so I have a very, a very accurate and consistent filing system for, for all of my tasks. But, you know, like specifically that you keep everything. So I keep it very organized with folders and such.
Good. Mr. Burton, number eight.
Okay, please describe your experience with BSNA or other different computer software programs.
So currently, I work with BSNA all day, every day. I previously worked at, it was a seasonal position at the deputy, or I'm sorry, the Genesee County Treasurer's Office, which was dealing with delinquent property taxes. So I was able to learn the delinquent part of it at the county. Obviously, I'm at the city level currently. And I use all BSNA, utility billing, cash receiving, accounts payable, cemetery, and a little bit in GL. So I've been in my position for two years. I did, I mean, I had a little bit prior to that of delinquent personal property experience with BSNA. But I've really had to, like, learn BSNA. And so I think that, like, two years of experience of it.
Okay, and so with that learning there, what is your learning process when encountering a new computer program?
So my, my process would be to familiarize myself with the software, learning the details of it, what the capabilities are, what it's used for. In the event that I don't know, I like to learn to find out what it, what you can do with it. Or I think a lot of times, there's more functions to it than we know or we use. So I like to explore those additional functions as well, just to make myself well-rounded on it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ruth, you want to take another swing?
Sure. Please describe your experience with working in a local government.
So currently, I work at the City of Linden. I'm the deputy treasurer there. It is my first experience with small local government. Obviously, it's a small city setting. My goal is to branch out to learn a bigger municipality, which Holly Township would offer that for me. But I've been there for two years and I love it. I love some local government.
You're set?
Yep.
Okay. Number 10 is currently a one-part question. I'm going to turn it into a two-part. What is your experience and involvement with Holly Township?
So I've been a lifelong resident. I live currently in the city, or I'm sorry, in the village, but in the township here. So I'm very familiar with the area. Grew up here and I, obviously, I'm a proud Holly Bronco. And so Holly is home to me. But as far as working, like, I haven't dove into actually working, like, volunteering in the community, which is something that I do, I would like to get involved in.
Okay, the second part of this question, because you were currently a deputy treasurer, you already explained why you'd like to come to Holly. It's bigger and a move. From a salary standpoint, is our salary in line with what you're currently making?
I'm hourly in my position, but I think that it's a little bit above. It's a little bit above.
Are you currently full, what they consider full-time?
Yes.
Okay. And, all right, you answered the other part of it as to why you wanted to come, but I did want to ask that question. Anybody have any additional follow-ups? Ms. Ryan? Mr. Ruth?
All set.
Usually, I've gotten an, oh, Steve, I wonder if I can tell when he's got a question rumbling by looking at him. So, all right, well, that completes your, our interview process.
Okay.
Did you have any questions?
I do have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Interesting, okay.
I do understand that, obviously, the treasurer position in the township is an elected position. For this position, does this position expire at the termination of a term?
No, so in our last budget, we changed the position. It's actually an administrative position.
Okay.
And it also, the treasurer can pick whoever she wants for the deputy treasurer. But we did that because in the event that the treasurer may not get re-elected or in the event that the treasurer were leaving, we don't want necessarily for the deputy's position to just disappear. If the township's going to take the time and paying to get training and so forth, and we don't necessarily want to lose that experience. The other thing that happened in the last election was the three, actually, all five elected officials had opponents. If the three administrative people had lost their election and the deputies went with them, the township would have virtually no experience walking in the door. So we felt it was important to make that position more of a full-time position where you don't have to worry if your boss gets elected or not elected, you'll still be here. And it ensured that the township would have some element of experience in the office at the time that there was a total change. So that's, that's why it's now an administrative one and administrative two. And then the treasurer can decide to add the deputy treasurer to that title or they could pick an outside person because state law allows that.
Okay.
So it's a little different here. We're not the first township to do that. Other townships have done it for the very same reason, and that's what we've gone to.
Okay. When you say there's a one and a two, one being the administrator position and two being the deputy treasurer?
One and two is based on the experience coming into the office.
Oh, gotcha, okay, you have two levels.
If we hired somebody that was coming from an outside firm because we liked their background, but they don't have municipal experience, they would probably start as administrative two. Fortunately for us, all of our candidates that we are interviewing, which are the top four, we did receive 21 applications, all of our candidates have municipal experience.
Oh, okay.
So my guess is whoever we hire would automatically be administrative two.
I didn't realize we have two separate positions. We should have a step system, right?
Administrative one and administrative two.
Right, but those are positions, like, one person fills one and one person fills the other, not, you know.
That's why I say, so this position today is administrative two.
No, one, it's the first administration.
Oh, is one the top?
No, we don't rate them like that.
Okay.
We have a five-step program, it's in your packet.
Right.
So, but their title isn't based on-
I mean, this title is treasurer administrator, right?
Yeah, period. Number one, if you, if we were hiring a second administrator, then that would be administrator two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just thought two was the top.
It's based on experience for the pay.
Gotcha, okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And Karen's right, as the office grew, a few had to have, like, another person. But we made them administrative as opposed to just deputy.
Right, so that you wouldn't worry about your job.
Yeah. The intent was to give security to those positions and to keep the experience in the office.
Okay. Another question of mine is, I'm on track to start the MMTA program, the Basic Institute, this coming spring, next spring, I should say. Would this position, position allow me to attend the MMTA?
Yes, we're all about training.
Okay.
That's, that's a big thing with me.
Okay, and on to that would be BSNA training, like, if that would be a possibility too. Perfect, okay. And then I guess I gotta, I gotta ask, is Thursdays jean Thursdays at the township?
Actually, we're, we're pretty casual.
Is it? Okay.
As long as you're not showing up in sweatpants, I think you're okay.
You will see, you will see days when I come in in a suit and tie, depending on my schedule. You'll see days when I'll come in in jeans and a t-shirt, depending on what I'm doing.
Okay.
For me, if I wear jeans, I don't feel like it works.
You know, we, I would say we're dressed casual.
Perfect, okay.
The other day, I actually brought a second t-shirt because I knew I was going to get dirty and I could take the dirty- but I had nothing on my schedule, so it varies.
Okay, I appreciate that.
For the most part, we're dressed casual.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I really appreciate your guys' time today.
All right, we appreciate yours as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
You too.
Thank you.
Now, the next.
That way we can tell if we can hear her or not.
Yeah, alright.
Okay Lisa, try talking.
Hold on, I'm up there.
Oh.
Hello everybody.
Hang on.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, it's just very quiet. We're gonna try to turn on the microphone to the computer. We've got a microphone right next to the computer.
Oh geez, okay.
We've got a microphone right next to the computer.
Oh, can you hear better out there?
I can hear it all here.
Well, that's Jen though.
It's still a little quiet though.
Okay.
Oh yeah. Thank you. Wake up kids. Duh.
That's alright though. Alright, all I knew was I was paying attention.
I can be slow every now and then.
We all have those moments.
I know.
Okay, so Lisa?
Yes?
You can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so we have a ten-question process. I will explain to you as I have the other interviewees. On our agenda today, we have the ability to make an appointment. If at the end of these interviews, the board is not ready to make that decision, we will table that and we may require second interviews, I don't know. But it's on the agenda, so we can make the decision if we want to. That being said, we have interviewed two people, there are a total of four being interviewed, and you are our third interviewee. We have ten questions, we will each take a turn asking them, and there is a follow-up to some of these questions as well. In the last interview, when I went to question number five, I didn't ask the follow-up because within her answer, she answered that follow-up. And I think Steve, you had that happen with your question as well. So, we will begin. I am going to...our leadoff batter has been Jen Ryan, she is the treasurer, so she will start with number one.
Okay, hello. Please describe your experience with accounts receivable and cash handling.
I have several years of accounts receivable and cash handling experience. Currently, I do the sewer billing and I...the cash handling part is by the girls up front, but when I worked for the village, I did a lot of the cash handling there, so I do have a lot of experience at that and balancing out every day.
Okay, what is your process if the recorded transactions don't match the cash received?
You go and double-check all your numbers. I usually run a spreadsheet, run the report, and go off the spreadsheet to see where the numbers don't match. We actually have that quite a bit with the girls up front. One of them will put a number in backwards sometimes, and we have to redo it, figure out where the mistake was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Karen, number two?
Please describe your experience with accounts payable and payroll.
I did payroll for the village, and currently I'm getting ready to take over payroll where I'm at. It's a little different from the village though, we don't have like the fire department and obviously the police. I never learned it in B.S.N.A., I'll be honest with that. I learned it in A.D.P. I understand the process. And AP, I've done AP for...you said AP, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I've done AP my whole career. So, I did AP over at the village for a short time. I learned that, very simple, pretty cut and dried. Where I'm at, at the township right now, our AP is very simple, easy. There is some things that if I took over that module, I would like to modify 'cause I think like with A.C.H.s and stuff, it could be a simpler process.
So what is your process for verifying the accuracy of an invoice?
You check the date, the...if you receive purchase orders or let's say an estimate, you check it with that, make sure that the estimate matches the invoice, and there's nothing else on there. We've had issues with that in the past with some of our contractors. They'll add stuff to the invoice and not tell us. Make sure it's not predated, so they can get their money ahead of time. Just accuracy with, like I said, the estimate or the purchase order, and make sure you input it correctly as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, Mr. Burton, number three?
Okay. Please describe your experience with accounting and reconciliations.
I currently reconcile both of our bank accounts at the township. I had just started that when I started back at the township. I didn't do reconciliations before that, and I have implemented it into B.S.N.A. They weren't using that, they were using a spreadsheet and downloading stuff and making it more difficult than it needed to be. Reconciliation to me is very simple, easy, it's kind of like a puzzle. If you don't balance, you gotta go find where the numbers don't match, or you know, if the bank's off, if you're off, journal entries, et cetera.
Okay.
Mr. Ruth, you're back in cleanup.
What is your priority when dealing with a dissatisfied resident or customer?
Basically, I've been called to the front a couple times when the girls couldn't handle, you know, several of the residents that come in, and you just let...basically let them speak their piece, and then you kindly explain to them their options. You usually have a couple scenarios, a couple options, and you explain that to them. Usually, they calm down.
Sounds like you've done that before.
I have done that several times. Very good at customer service.
Yep, I'm all set.
Alright. How do you organize and prioritize your tasks?
I usually do that in the morning, and I always put stuff in my calendar, my Outlook calendar, everything I have to do on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis. My calendar is my guide, and I also have a...I'm old school, I'm sorry, but I have a calendar that I write stuff in as well.
How do you keep on track when you're interrupted?
How do I keep on track, George?
Yes, how do you keep on track...how do you keep on track when you get interrupted?
Oh, I'm very good at multitasking. That is like one of my specialties. I'm very good at staying on task. You know, if I get interrupted, you know, say a customer comes in, I'm working on a spreadsheet, I will stop the spreadsheet for a second, go do what I have to do, and come back to it. I have several tasks that I have to do on a daily basis, and I'm very good at getting everything done that I need to get done for the day with interruptions. I get several interruptions.
Alright, Karen, number six?
How do you ensure good communication with your coworkers?
I communicate very well with my coworkers. We have three girls up front, and all of them do sewer billing and enter stuff for tax and all that stuff. And if we...if I notice there's something wrong or something that they made a mistake, I don't go up and criticize, I go up there to ask them how they entered this, you know, what they saw, and then what I see, and it helps them understand how they entered the transaction incorrectly from what they looked at in the system.
Alright, Mr. Burton, number seven?
Okay. How do you determine what documentation to file?
What doc...are you talking like tax files or just invoices, or can you elaborate on that please?
Well, you could answer either one of those, it would be fine.
Okay, so per se for taxes, usually I do not file a lot of my tax stuff until settlement. And I put all, even the settlement stuff, I put it all in one box, and it is marked for that year. Okay, for invoices, you do by fiscal year. Invoices are done, you know, after your audit. All your fiscal year stuff gets filed for the fiscal year, and you mark the box. And in the past, I have even had a spreadsheet with the box numbers put on there. That way, when you put them away, you can find them easily. 'Cause you...'cause more than likely, you're gonna go digging for something.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, Mr. Ruth, take another swing?
Number nine, or eight?
Eight.
Please describe your experience with B.S.N.A. or other different computer software programs.
Oh, I have Great Lakes experience that was from a private sector. I have Plexus experience, I'm very good at systems. When I first entered into the government sector, I had no experience at B.S.N.A. Well, with my past experience as being in automotive and different...you know, they change their systems like candy. Anyways, B.S.N.A. was a very simple, easy system to use. And if I have issues or problems, as you may know, you can call them, and they're very helpful with you. I do not have a problem, and I knew nothing about tax when I started, and tax is easy to me, it's fun, I love my job. I love that system, that system is great.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Ryan, number nine?
Please describe your experience working in local government. Why are you interested in working for a local government?
I love seeing the people, I love the...working with numbers, the treasury part of it. I like seeing like everyone come together, everyone work as a team to have the same goal.
Ms. Ryan? Upset? Okay. Last question, what is your experience and involvement in Holly Township?
Can you elaborate on that? What do you mean by that, George?
So, how are you involved in Holly Township? What things are you familiar with, or what things have you done?
Oh, you mean like...I'm a very busy person, I will say that. I don't do a lot in the township. I...we camp and stuff like that, but as far as being involved, I was more involved in the village stuff, I would say, 'cause I didn't really know things that were going on with the township. I never really followed stuff that was going on in the township. But now that, you know, I worked at the township, I kind of follow some of the meetings you guys have and stuff like that.
So, you are currently with Fenton Township?
Yes, sir.
And your job title is?
Deputy Treasurer.
Okay, as Deputy Treasurer, you're moving to Holly. Is the pay in line with what you're currently making?
Your beginning pay is a little bit lower than what I'm making.
Okay, so you would be willing to take a pay cut, why?
Because it's closer to home and you guys have Fridays off, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a difference in my community that I live in instead of in another community, and also I'd like to work within my county as well.
Okay. Are there any other follow-up questions from the board? Karen?
No, no questions.
Jen?
No.
Gentlemen?
No, all set.
Alright, Lisa, we thank you for your time.
Does she have any questions for us?
Oh, do you have any questions for us?
Yes, I don't know if Jen can answer this or not yet, being that she's new, but do you know if they're currently using Auto Agent?
I'm sorry, that again?
Auto Agent's for...
Do you say Auto Agent?
Do you know what Auto Agent is? Yeah. Okay, it's a system, it's a free system. I just wondered if you guys were using it, 'cause I'm starting to implement it over here. It's so you don't get double payments for taxes.
Okay.
And it saves a lot of time and money. Yeah, I just wondered if you guys were utilizing that, that's all.
What's it called once more?
Auto Agent.
Auto Agent.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your camping.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, and you will be notified.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. My name's George Colas, I'm the Township Supervisor, Karen Winchester, the Clerk. My name's George Colas, I'm the Township Supervisor, Karen Winchester, the Clerk. This is Jen Ryan, she's our Treasurer. This is Jen Ryan, she's our Treasurer, and we have Derek Burton as a trustee and Mr. Ruth. And we have Derek Burton as a trustee and Mr. Ruth.
Are you? Are you?
So, I don't know whether you looked at the agenda when you walked in the door, So, I don't know whether you looked at the agenda when you walked in the door, but on the agenda, we have, the second thing under new business is to make an appointment for today. but on the agenda, we have, the second thing under new business is to make an appointment for today. We have that on the agenda because without it, we couldn't do that. We have that on the agenda because without it, we couldn't do that. If this board at the end of your interview, which is the fourth interview for today, If this board at the end of your interview, which is the fourth interview for today, if this board is not ready to make a decision and we need a second interview, if this board is not ready to make a decision and we need a second interview, we will simply table that and we'll do it another time. we will simply table that and we'll do it another time. But I wanted to explain why it's on there. But I wanted to explain why it's on there. That being said, we have 10 questions with some follow-ups. That being said, we have 10 questions with some follow-ups. We will take turns with the questions, and when we're done, if you have any questions, We will take turns with the questions, and when we're done, if you have any questions, we'll deal with those as well. we'll deal with those as well.
Okay. Okay.
We're going to start the lineup with our Treasurer, and she bats first, so go ahead. We're going to start the lineup with our Treasurer, and she bats first, so go ahead.
Please describe your experience with accounts receivable and cash handling. Please describe your experience with accounts receivable and cash handling.
I previously processed all incoming invoices, coded them with general ledger account numbers, I previously processed all incoming invoices, coded them with general ledger account numbers, balanced numerous tills in the Treasurer's office and the DPW, balanced numerous tills in the Treasurer's office and the DPW. and I worked at a bank previously, but that's been many years ago. And I worked at a bank previously, but that's been many years ago. But I worked there for 12 years as well. But I worked there for 12 years as well.
What is your process if the recorded transactions don't match the cash received? What is your process if the recorded transactions don't match the cash received?
You have to balance out your incoming checks with stubs. You have to balance out your incoming checks with stubs. I'm not sure, this would be tax bills in this case. I'm not sure, this would be tax bills in this case. And if you're out of balance, you have to go through each and every item And if you're out of balance, you have to go through each and every item and make sure the check is written for the amount of the tax bill. and make sure the check is written for the amount of the tax bill. Or if you accept charges, I'm not sure if you guys do debits or cards? Or if you accept charges, I'm not sure if you guys do debits or cards.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you have to excuse me, I'm dealing with a charley horse on my left leg, Okay, you have to excuse me, I'm dealing with a charley horse on my left leg, so I can't sit down just right now. so I can't sit down just right now. It wants to pull my foot right up to my backside. It wants to pull my foot right up to my backside.
Oh, painful. Oh, painful.
Karen, you want to take number two? Karen, you want to take number two?
Sure. Sure. Please describe your experience with accounts payable and payroll. Please describe your experience with accounts payable and payroll.
With payroll, our, we had a time clock as well as sheets that printed out at the end of every week. With payroll, we had a time clock as well as sheets that printed out at the end of every week. And if there's overtime or call-outs, whatever the case may be, And if there's overtime or call-outs, whatever the case may be, we prepared a sheet to send over to the payroll department. we prepared a sheet to send over to the payroll department. And that's how the payroll department created the paychecks. And that's how the payroll department created the paychecks.
What is your process for verifying accuracy of an invoice? What is your process for verifying accuracy of an invoice?
Okay, um, there's purchase orders sometimes involved. Okay, there's purchase orders sometimes involved. When, the way that we done it, which it could be different here, When, the way that we done it, which it could be different here, when it's over a certain dollar amount, you have to issue a PO. when it's over a certain dollar amount, you have to issue a PO. Then you get a fax or email confirmation of what the purchase is that somebody's making. Then you get a fax or email confirmation of what the purchase is that somebody's making. Then when the actual bill comes in, you compare that to your quote and make sure it's correct. Then when the actual bill comes in, you compare that to your quote and make sure it's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burton, number four, or number three, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Burton, number four, or number three, I'm sorry.
Yep. Yep. Please describe your experience with accounting and reconciliations. Please describe your experience with accounting and reconciliations.
It was huge, it was so huge. It was huge, it was so huge. We had to balance monthly and then also annually. We had to balance monthly and then also annually. I worked with the auditors when they came in to do the annual, I worked with the auditors when they came in to do the annual, make sure all our Is were dotted and Ts were crossed. make sure all our Is were dotted and Ts were crossed. That was just, it was a very, very big process. That was just, it was a very, very big process. We had such a large sum of transactions in general. We had such a large sum of transactions in general.
Okay. Okay. And then what is your process when you have unreconciled, unreconciled differences? And then what is your process when you have unreconciled, unreconciled differences?
Well, you have to go through the process to see where the error was. Well, you have to go through the process to see where the error was. And whether it be to call a vendor if a bill doesn't match what they, is that what you're asking me? And whether it be to call a vendor if a bill doesn't match what they, is that what you're asking me?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, if the bill doesn't match what the quote was, Okay, if the bill doesn't match what the quote was, you can't just take their word for it, you have to get to the bottom of it and make it right. you can't just take their word for it, you have to get to the bottom of it and make it right.
Okay. Okay.
All right. All right. Mr. Ruth, number four. Mr. Ruth, number four. What is your priority when dealing with dissatisfied residents or customers? What is your priority when dealing with dissatisfied residents or customers?
Aim to please and make them happy. Aim to please and make them happy. Always, no matter if they're wrong or right, they're right. Always, no matter if they're wrong or right, they're right. And then you discuss it, if you can't get it all taken care of while they're there, And then you discuss it, if you can't get it all taken care of while they're there, you can get back with them, or if they're on the phone, dig into it, call them back with the answer. you can get back with them, or if they're on the phone, dig into it, call them back with the answer. That's one of my strong suits, I have a lot of patience. That's one of my strong suits, I have a lot of patience.
Good. Good. Sounds like you've dealt with that before. Sounds like you've dealt with that before. All right, number five, how do you organize and prioritize your tasks? All right, number five, how do you organize and prioritize your tasks?
Deadlines, what's, the what's due. Deadlines, what's, the what's due. The most important things get done first, there's some things you can put off after you take care of. The most important things get done first, there's some things you can put off after you take care of. Deadlines. Deadlines. There's lots of those. There's lots of those.
All right, Ms. Ryan, number six. All right, Ms. Ryan, number six.
How do you ensure good communication with coworkers? How do you ensure good communication with coworkers?
I'm a big believer of teamwork. I'm a big believer of teamwork. I always say there's no I in team, because there isn't. I always say there's no I in team, because there isn't. I just, I, communication is key. I just, I, communication is key. I think everybody needs to be on the same page. I think everybody needs to be on the same page. If somebody doesn't know something, bring them up to speed on it, just communication. If somebody doesn't know something, bring them up to speed on it, just communication.
Karen, number seven. Karen, number seven.
How do you determine what documentation to file? How do you determine what documentation to file?
What documentation to file? What documentation to file? Such as, do you do filing, electronic filing, or? Such as, do you do filing, electronic filing, or?
Any kind, any kind of documentation. Kind, any kind of documentation. How do you determine what it is that you need to file and what you don't? How do you determine what it is that you need to file and what you don't?
Things that you keep, and there's a term on how long you have to keep things? Things that you keep, and there's a term on how long you have to keep things? Up to seven years, five years, whatever the case may be for that item. Up to seven years, five years, whatever the case may be for that item.
Right, I'm good. Right, I'm good.
Mr. Burton, number eight. Mr. Burton, number eight.
Okay. Okay. Please describe your experience with BSNA or other different computer software programs. Please describe your experience with BSNA or other different computer software programs.
Okay, my experience with BSNA was about a year. Okay, my experience with BSNA was about a year. And that's after I retired, I worked at White Lake for a year, and that's where I learned BSNA. And that's after I retired, I worked at White Lake for a year, and that's where I learned BSNA. We did not have that at Watford Township. We did not have that at Watford Township. It was a Munus system, very, very outdated. It was a Munus system, very, very outdated. But the powers within did not want to switch, even though the county, everybody wanted Watford But the powers within did not want to switch, even though the county, everybody wanted Watford to go with BSNA and they just didn't. to go with BSNA and they just didn't.
Okay. Okay.
It was a Munus software, and there were so many extra steps just because we wouldn't, It was a Munus software, and there were so many extra steps just because we wouldn't, the people that make those choices did not want to switch to BSNA. the people that make those choices did not want to switch to BSNA.
And what is your learning process when encountering a new computer program? And what is your learning process when encountering a new computer program?
Well... Well... Usually you have steps, and if you don't have steps, somebody shows you and you write the steps, Usually you have steps, and if you don't have steps, somebody shows you and you write the steps, so if you have to refer back to it. so if you have to refer back to it. I'm, I'm a big one on notes, too. I'm, I'm a big one on notes, too. I like to take notes and feel organized. I like to take notes and feel organized. Notes to share, too. Notes to share, too.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Ruth, another swing. All right, Mr. Ruth, another swing.
Yep. Yep.
Please describe your experience with working in a local in government. Please describe your experience with working in a local in government.
Well, I worked at Watford Township for 28 years. Well, I worked at Watford Township for 28 years. I worked in many different departments. I worked in many different departments. We had, it was Department of Public Works, which fell under water and sewer and then grounds, We had, it was Department of Public Works, which fell under water and sewer and then grounds, automotive, buildings, flagging traffic, reading meters, doing accounting, wide range. automotive, buildings, flagging traffic, reading meters, doing accounting, wide range. And I thought it was good because the girls in the office, when there's something out in this, And I thought it was good because the girls in the office, when there's something out in this, like a water main break or something, we have no idea what these guys are talking about. like a water main break or something, we have no idea what these guys are talking about. So we took turns, each girl, a month to go out and see. So we took turns, each girl, a month to go out and see. So, you know, we knew what they were dealing with and they knew what we were dealing with. So, you know, we knew what they were dealing with and they knew what we were dealing with.
Good idea. Good idea. Okay, all set. Okay, all set. What is your experience and involvement in Holly Township? What is your experience and involvement in Holly Township?
We're fairly new out here in Holly Township. We're fairly new out here in Holly Township. We've been out here about five years. We've been out here about five years. And we love it, just love it out here. And we love it, just love it out here. I came from West Boomfield, Watford area, and out here, just, my brother lives out here. I came from West Boomfield, Watford area, and out here, just, my brother lives out here. And when we would come to their house, I felt like I was driving up north just coming out here. And when we would come to their house, I felt like I was driving up north just coming out here. But now that I'm here, everything's not that far away, it doesn't seem. But now that I'm here, everything's not that far away, it doesn't seem. Once you get used to it, I love it, we love it. Once you get used to it, I love it, we love it.
Did you know our tagline was up north in Oakland County? Did you know our tagline was up north in Oakland County?
Yeah. Up front, yeah.
Yeah.
Last night, we drove through town, we had to go to the post office. Last night, we drove through town, we had to go to the post office. And said, hmm, what are all these people out here? And said, hmm, what are all these people out here? So we came, we parked, and it was, I think, the Friday Night Girls. So we came, we parked, and it was, I think, the Friday Night Girls.
It was Ern in the Alley. It was Ern in the Alley.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, I bought some stuff from Ern in the Alley. Okay, well, I bought some stuff from Ern in the Alley.
And, and, and Andy's place was, had their food truck. And, and, and Andy's place was, had their food truck.
Yes, yep. Yes, yep.
Down there, so. Down there, so. All right, did you have any questions for us? All right, did you have any questions for us?
I, just peek real quick, I think we might have gone over things that I... I, just peek real quick, I think we might have gone over things that I... One question I had, when it's election time, does other departments sign up to help the Clerk's office? One question I had, when it's election time, does other departments sign up to help the Clerk's office? Or how, or does everybody work, how does it work for elections? Or how, or does everybody work, how does it work for elections? Because I've worked in two communities. Because I've worked in two communities.
Nobody's usually helped, but I'll, I'll take it when I can get it. Nobody's usually helped, but I'll, I'll take it when I can get it.
I did, I worked at Independence Township right after I retired. I did, I worked at Independence Township right after I retired. And I worked at, doing the absentee ballots and waiting on the counter. And I worked at, doing the absentee ballots and waiting on the counter. And that's nice to know how both ends work, being a voter versus what goes on. And that's nice to know how both ends work, being a voter versus what goes on. I learned so much, and I loved it. I learned so much, and I loved it. So I just didn't know if you get sign-ups. So I just didn't know if you get sign-ups. At Watford, they did, the Clerk's office begged for help. At Watford, they did, the Clerk's office begged for help.
Well, I will say this, even though Karen says she doesn't get any help, I lose my assistant. Well, I will say this, even though Karen says she doesn't get any help, I lose my assistant. Yeah. Yeah.
Is that Amy? Is that Amy?
Yes. Yes.
I would say, I lose my assistant to elections. I would say, I lose my assistant to elections.
It's just a given. It's just a given.
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, that's what I said. So, all right, and the board, anyone else have any questions? So, all right, and the board, anyone else have any questions? Karen? Karen?
All set. All set.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you for your time, you will be notified. Okay, all right, thank you for your time, you will be notified.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Enjoy the weekend. Enjoy the weekend.
You, too. You, too.